We got police down here harassing the homeless. Out here. Slow observers down here.
Why is there no fucking female present? Why is there no female officer present? Where are you taking her? Why? Why?
She's requesting a female officer. She's requesting a female officer.
When I requested a female fucking officer, why are you touching me? Why are you touching me? Why are you touching me?
Officer, I saw two female cops drive by today.
I requested a female officer.
It takes three for one lady, but you guys can't.
She wants a female officer. You guys are hurting her.
She just assaults another woman for no reason.
Where's the woman? Where's the woman? Where's the victim? Where's the victim? Alright, then there's no victim. Let her go. Can I get your name and badge number? Mr. Escalation? Well, you got a badge.
Don't interfere with what he's doing.
Alright Walsh. Twenty-nine.
Why are you allowed to touch me however you want? Why are you allowed to touch me however you want? When you know I'm a fucking female? You haven't asked me for any of my fucking information. You haven't asked me for any of my information. No, you haven't. You haven't asked me a damn word. You fucking dragged me to the ground. You fucking put your hands all over me. And you haven't fucking called the goddamn single fucking female officer because he says there's no one available. How is there? Then I will wait here. I will wait here until there's a female officer available. How about that? Can we wait here until there's a female? Can we wait here? Why does it matter whether or not my ass is on the floor versus right here? So, why am I under arrest? You never told me. Why am I under arrest? You never told me why I'm under arrest. You never told me why I'm under arrest. What's your name? What's your name? What's your badge number? Why am I under arrest?
I can vouch for her.
Why am I under arrest? 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 It's all for show.
She's entitled to know what she's... What's the charges?
Why am I under arrest?
She's entitled to know.
Why am I under arrest? Why am I under arrest?
She's entitled to know what she's under arrest for, and so are we. Yes, I am. No, it's not. You guys are tyrants, man. Hope you have a good day. Don't beat your wife or kick your dog. Run with scissors. Eat yellow snow. And you, rookie boy, need to get another job. Because you're working with the devil. That's right. One-five-three-seven, one-four-seven-eight-two-four. They didn't tell this lady what her charges were. What they are, A.S., reasonable, articulable suspicion of a crime. They didn't read her her Miranda rights. None of that. Totally unprofessional. This dude here is not being trained properly. You didn't read her her Miranda rights. Treating her like an animal. All she wanted you to do was answer her question. Why couldn't you do that? Well, they got a new rookie tyrant over here. You're a fucking clown, dude. I saw him earlier today.
So now I'm taking the interviews. I'm interviewing the witness. Now your interference will please stay back.
Interference is a physical act. It's physical. Karen, over here. Can you believe that? They didn't read her her Miranda rights and they didn't tell her where her crime was. You got it all on camera. He's trying to get all up in my face.
There's something else going on in Higera and South. Sheriff's units going to back on.
You want to go over there?
I do.
We're done with this, right?
Yeah, well, I want to see what they're recording.
That's the Karen. Let me get up there a little closer. He might nab me, but... I'm just trying to get your name and badge number. Did I see you earlier?
Yeah, Keller.
Keller, yeah, seventy-nine.
Nine-nine-two-nine-five.
Thank you very much. Appreciate that. The slow observer right there. Want to go?
If we go, we're going to miss the meeting. Might as well decide at the whole.
Yeah. That guy's a tyrant. They're trying to train him how to be a tyrant. This young guy. Huh?
Keller's the new guy.
Yeah. He's pretty nice right now, but... They're going to try to, you know, turn him into one. Maybe we can get him over to our side.
Turn him into an odd. I'm just going to watch.
You think we missed the meeting?
He was there backing up Magonya when he retaliated.
This guy was? Oh, man, Miller.
But I mean, you know, he has to have his back.
Yeah, he does. That's true. So he's been on for a while, huh? How long?
He's been, uh, I'm not sure.
How long have you been on, Miller?
Keller.
Keller? He was Miller. June? Oh, okay, not even a year yet. Later. Oh, you got a smile out of him.
Sheriff.
He's a sheriff?
Deputy.
Oh, okay. So what's going on with the sheriffs over there?
I don't know.
Where was it?
They didn't say much. South in Higera.
South in Higera? That's not too far.
It's up in Inferno, Crofty, Canada. D Street. Oh, gee, what's up?
It's canceled. Cut. Roll him! Here's the witness.
Got his little badge on his belt?
Yeah. Makes him feel like a... He has a crotch rocket on his belt. So what'd she do? Hey, lady! Can you share? We're not taking any sides. She didn't want to tell us. Alright, then. Be that way. Here comes a cop right here, look. Keep rolling them! Got some action down here with the cherries and the berries. Who is it?
Is that Magonya? Can't tell.
Two-one-oh-six. Ooh, he's stopping. Let's go see. Watch him take off! Look at him. Right, he's going. He's taking off! Chicken. Must be Magonya. So that's where the meeting's going to be?
Yeah. There's a city council meeting today. We're planning on attending.
Right over here. We're going to go redress our government in the meeting. Roll him!
Call sign twenty.
Saying twenty?
Yeah.
What's twenty? Look at, he's a laughing hyena, this one. Did you see him? Here's the hug fest before the city council meeting starts. Here's Low Observer, my new buddy. He's rad. Do subscribe to his channel. And watch his... Leave him a comment and tell him Katie Kidman sent you. He's rad. Keeping government officials accountable.
I like that.
Yes, sir, so do we. Alright, nice. Nice. Nice photo. I want to get you online. Oh, they got a big pumpkin in there. Hi, ladies. You coming to the meeting? City Council meeting in San Luis Obispo. December ninth, twenty-twenty-two, four o'clock in the afternoon. Keeping them accountable. Meeting starts in ten minutes.
Oh, does it?
There's a clock up there. So we'll cut online, let them chit chat. There's some pretty cool looking pictures up here on the wall. There's a glare on there. He's all sky, he's saying. He's all sky, he plays the piano. Teresa Purington. And that Cheryl Shoresman. That Carly Christensen. Vice Mayor. She's the Vice Mayor. They got like a little computer going on. Little here, Speaker. Derek Johnson. Jan Hal Marcus. Andy Peace. Eric Stewart. And all those pictures up there. And the flag. Nice flags, huh? California. Very nice. Christine Dietrich. Candy. Five minutes to four.
Yes. So you do know that tonight, since it's a special meeting, this is only for items that are on the agenda. Okay. So it's not just a general anything that you want to talk about. It has to be one of the items that are on your agenda. It's good for mission.
Okay, thank you. Do I need to pull this out?
Yes, you do, and you can put it in next.
In that little thing right there?
Okay, thank you.
And what's your name?
Teresa Purington.
Teresa what?
Purington.
Purington? What do you do here?
I'm the city clerk.
Nice to meet you. I'm Katie Kidman. Nice to meet you. Hi, how are you?
Fox. Excuse me.
Thank you.
Alright, cut. Alright, I'm going to put my piece of paper up in the public comments box. There it is. I did three minutes. Sorry. You're fine. How's it going? I know her. Are you guys firemen?
Yep.
Firemen, oh, alright, cool. Nice to have you here. We got a couple of firemen behind us right here.
Yeah, I saw that.
Roll them. Look at her setup. Action!
America. Public for which it stands. One nation, a new God.
Well, as this is a special meeting, so make sure everyone knows that public comment will only be for items that are on the actual agenda. And we'll be calling those public comment items when each agenda item comes up. So first, we have a result of the November eighth general municipal election. Well, city manager, sorry, deputy city manager Greg Herman and the city clerk Teresa Purington present a report.
Sure, thank you, mayor and council members. I'm going to hand it over to Teresa shortly to provide the report, but I just want to take a quick moment to thank the entire city clerk team for their support, hard work, dedication to our local election process. And that includes our city clerk Teresa Purington and our deputy city Kevin Christian. And we give you a little thanks. With that, I'm going to hand it over to Teresa.
Good afternoon, Mayor Stewart. The members of the county council, on December eighth, two thousand and twenty-two, county clerk reporter Lena Kano certified the results of the November eighth, twenty-twenty-two, general municipal election. Most reserved, also indicated that Erica B. Stewart received the highest number of votes and was the candidate elected to the office of mayor. Michelle Shoresman and Emily Francis received the highest number of votes and were the candidates elected to the office of councilman. Before you today is a resolution declaring the results of the November eighth, twenty-twenty-two, city San Luis Obispo general municipal election.
Thank you so much. And I'd like to echo deputy city manager Greg Herman and his thoughts on the city clerk office. It's been an amazing process to watch yourself and Megan and Kevin work. Such a huge project, so thank you so much. Are there any questions of staff? Okay, great. Then we'll go ahead and call public comment on this item. Deputy clerk, are there any...
No, there are not.
Are there not? Okay, thank you so much. Well, Vice Mayor, would you like to... Make an motion? It's that time. I would like to thank the city clerk's office as well, and I will go ahead and move staff's recognition. Thank you. Councilor Pies, a second?
A second, thank you.
Thank you. Any future comment or further comment? Alright. City clerk, will you please call roll?
Vice Mayor Christiansen?
Yes.
Councilman Pies?
Yes.
Councilman Marcus?
Yes.
Councilman Corwin?
Yes.
I'm shaking, sorry.
Yes, and that moves five-zero. Thank you so much. Alright, so next is something that many people have been waiting for for a long time. We're going to have a presentation five A, the recognition of outgoing Vice Mayor Carolyn Christiansen. And just for the order of events, so everyone will know what happens, is I'll be reading a proclamation for the Vice Mayor, recognizing her, of course, dedicated public service. And then we'll present you, Vice Mayor, with a certificate of recognition. And then we'll have public comment for Vice Mayor Christiansen. Upon that, sorry, we'll have each council member be able to share their thoughts. And we'll go ahead and then call council member, Vice Mayor Christiansen, to make personal comments. So, get forward this proclamation. Alright, so this proclamation is expressing sincere appreciation and gratitude to Vice Mayor Carolyn Christiansen for her service to the city of San Luis Obispo and its residents. Whereas, Carolyn Christiansen joined the San Luis Obispo community in nineteen-eighty-nine, a strong supporter of women's reproductive rights of choice and access. She worked for Planned Parenthood as center director from nineteen-eighty-nine through nineteen-ninety-five, and was key in facilitating the relocation of the Planned Parenthood clinic after the arson fire in February nineteen-ninety-five. Carolyn served on the Slow Chamber of Commerce's Board of Directors as a steering committee member for Action for Healthy Communities, chair of the Chamber's Housing Task Force, board member for the Environmental Defense Center, chair of the Slow County Health Commission, board member for the Slow Community Health Foundation, and Leadership Slow. Carolyn served on the city's planning commission for six years and serving on the county's planning commission for four years. She served on the land use and circulation task force to update the city's general plan and blueprint for future development. Carolyn chose to continue her public service and was elected to the city council in a June two thousand and thirteen special election to fill out a term for a full term in two thousand and fourteen and her current term in two thousand and eighteen, truly reflecting her commitment to both public service and her community. Carolyn has demonstrated a love and care for all of her fellow persons with exceptional commitment to inclusiveness and diversity, making all people feel welcome and cared for. And her personal drive toward justice and fairness have made the San Luis Obispo city and community a brighter and richer place to live. Carolyn has mentored dozens of advisory body members and several council members, providing gentle coaching, gentle, direct advice. Direct advice, occasional stern looks, and lots of warm encouragement. Carolyn's direct tell-it-like-it-is style of communication and clear-eyed deliberation at the dais reflects her profound commitment to effective and efficient governance, respects for the public process, a passion for community service, and a huge heart. During Carolyn's term in office, she has led the city in the passage of Measure G twenty, COVID-nineteen response, developing a plan for carbon neutrality, creation of the community action team and mobile crisis unit teams to address homelessness and development of housing projects across the community. Carolyn's lasting legacy will benefit generations, and she most certainly left San Luis Obispo better than when she arrived and will be sorely missed both personally and professionally. Now, therefore, be it proclaimed on behalf of all of our citizens and employees, we hereby express our sincere appreciation and gratitude to Carolyn Christiansen for her dedicated service to the community and extend best wishes for her happiness in all future endeavors.
Whoa. Good afternoon. I noticed you all were closed today, huh? You're closed in here on Friday?
We're open.
Oh, you're open? Oh, because I came here this morning earlier and the building was locked down, so...
Is this regarding the item of recognition outgoing?
It's, I'm very happy to hear that we have a new Vice Mayor. And I'm hoping that the new Vice... Congratulations on your service, or thank you for your service. But I'm hoping that, you know, the way you guys are talking up here is really perplexing because the homelessness situation is out of hand. Okay? So hopefully, the new mayor that comes in, the Vice Mayor, doesn't like, just act like everything's rosy because the police are out of hand.
Thank you so much. We'll go ahead and talk about homeless another time, but we're just...
I have other issues. Because I want, I want the new Vice Mayor to be able to focus on these new issues. When she comes in...
When we're on that topic, we have that agenda topic.
Well, I'm on that topic right now.
We're not on that yet. Thank you so much.
Okay, so the police... The police are abusing people out there. Alright? I'm going to say what I have to say right now.
Ma'am, I appreciate you wanting to talk, and we totally can when it comes to Vice Mayor.
Well, the public never does have a chance to talk, okay? I was arrested. I was arrested here in San Luis Obispo. Casey Camerboy was strong-armed. The police are being... Alright, well, you heard what I had to say. You got the message. You're not welcome. You guys need to do better. You can't sit up here and talk like everything's peachy when the whole town is full of homeless people.
Our next speaker is Senator...
Thank you.
Yeah, go ahead and look. At least somebody has the nerve to get up and tell you the truth.
Yeah, you think I'm here on behalf of your California state senator John Lehrer? Congratulations.
Well, Madam Vice Mayor, we couldn't let you go out on a nice, easy note, could we? Had to let you know what you were going to be missing from now on. And I'm going to use another two and a half minutes of making you sit up there for the public comment to say thank you so much on behalf of the, from the Slow Chamber of Commerce, from your time serving on the chamber, through your time as a councilman. serving on the chamber, through your time as Councilmember Vice Mayor.
No, you can take your whole three minutes.
This dais has been incredible and has really led to the changes we're seeing on housing, on issues that are so important to our community, that are helping us grow as a community. And I know, I speak for our entire board, our entire staff and everybody that has served. We are so appreciative of all the work you've done.
Well, we, the people, are not.
And the gentle feedback. I've only been here four years and I haven't had any gentle feedback. But certainly appreciative of it. It's wonderful because as a community, you always knew where Councilmember Christensen was coming from and what her point, whether she agreed with you or not, she listened, and she told you what she thought was going to happen and why that was important. So, on behalf of the Chamber of Commerce, we just want to say...
I'm shaking because it pisses me off to listen to this kind of crowd.
Thank you so much for all you've done for us here. You'll have to be quiet.
You'll be quiet.
I can't hear when you're talking.
Thank you so much. And now we'll go ahead and move forward to the City Council, and I'm going to bring this over to Councilmember Mark so she may present you.
Yeah, Carolyn and I go back a long time. When I first ran for City Council in 1998, she was my treasurer. And then when she was running for election, special election, 2013, I wrote a letter to my constituents and on her behalf, and I said, I believe it's absolutely crucial to elect a seasoned veteran who will make wise, balanced decisions with over ten years planning experience. She's by far the most qualified candidate. Carolyn shares our community vision of a dynamic, balanced, sustainable city, and she's an enthusiastic advocate of open space. She cares deeply about our city, maintaining its role as a cultural, economic, and environmental regional leader. She has a proven track record of loyalty, outstanding service to the city, and she has energy, intelligence, experience, a balanced perspective of work ethic, and community spirit to be an excellent councillor. Right now, our city needs Carolyn for City Council. She's simply the right person for the job. And I'm so happy that she never made a liar out of me. So, but there's also a very special cause dear to Carolyn's heart, and so I'm going to give her this special present on behalf of the whole council.
There are, I don't know, 6,000 homes being built recently in the next few years. That probably do a lot to do with my advocacy. And this plaque very kindly says, "Carlin Christensen, recognition of all that you have done to advocate for housing in the city of San Luis Obispo, July 16th," actually, it's July 1st, 2013, to December 1st, actually, it's December 9th, 2013.
Thank you, Dan. And that's our piece.
Thank you so much. We all had a chance to kind of agree to the proclamation, so I can have my remarks here be brief, but just to say that thank you for your leadership, your mentorship, and your friendship. You embrace the wisdom and commitment and being fun to enjoy serving with you, and our community is a better place for your time on council and public service.
Yes, I too have known Vice Mayor Christensen for a very long time, back to her days at Planned Parenthood. I worked with her there as well. And I'd echo a lot of the sentiments that have already been said.
Would you mind getting away from me?
Will you please be quiet?
Get away from me.
She is a fierce supporter and defender of women and a mentor to many of us, including myself. I'm super grateful to have you next to me on the dais this last year and to have the benefit of your knowledge and experience. I will sincerely miss you sitting here. As Jim said, you could always be counted on to be direct, but fair and pragmatic as well. And we never had to wonder where you were on things. You did not hesitate to tell me when I was wrong. But yes. We got over it quickly, you got over it quickly, and you moved on, and that's what I've always appreciated about you. And I do wish you the best and hope that you thoroughly enjoy the first and third Tuesday.
I can't thank you enough. In 2018, when I first ran, I got to run alongside you and learned so much at that time. And then as coming onto the council, watched how you guided many people, and yes, always appreciated the direct responses. But truly, it was with kindness and with love and caring, and I just felt like I couldn't have gotten through even the mountains of emails and how to filter and how to work on things so I could actually get through priorities and responding. And I just really appreciated from the nitty-gritty things like that to issues you've been dealing with for 20 years with housing. And when I had questions, you were willing to answer every single question possible, the easy ones and the hard ones. And I also really love how, even when we completely disagree on certain items, we were able to have those conversations and still talk later and say, "So, what did you mean? Why did you say it that way?" And we really were able to have these very honest conversations, so I always appreciate that. I appreciate your fierce caring for women, being a diversity ally, caring about culture and arts, and of course, housing and the climate. So, there are so many things I can continue to say, but these people would like to go home at some point in time. So, thank you for all of your service, and I will turn it over to you. Well, thank you very much. I appreciate those very kind words, and yeah, I have a funny speech to make, no I don't. I do have a few words I'd like to say, and I don't, I like speaking on behalf of issues. I don't really like speaking like this, but there you go. Christine told me I had to do it. She warned me months ago, "Oh, yes, you're going to give a speech." So, I do have a speech, but I, kind of yesterday, I was driving around town doing errands, and I was really hitting a lot of different areas. I don't normally drive a lot, I live downtown, I usually walk most everywhere. It was a beautiful day, as you know, it was, you know, the hills are green, everything's washed clean from the rain. And every time I'm driving around the arterial streets, I learned that from CDB, arterial streets, it reminds me of when I ran around the city once, I was training for a marathon, and so I started at Laguna Middle School near where I lived. I ran down Los Sussos Valley Road to South Agira, South Agira to Tank Farm, Tank Farm to Orca, Orca to Johnson, Johnson to California, California to Foothill, Foothill to Los Sussos Valley Road, and home to the lake. That's about 17 miles, and what I was struck by yesterday was how the city is still pretty much contained in that 17-mile circle. We do have a little abola, we do have the other side of Orca, but not really. It's pretty much in that, in that area. And, and I was remembering how somebody, when I first ran for office in 2013, asked me what the vision for, what my vision for the city was. And I was kind of dumbstruck that I was supposed to have a vision. But I said then what I've always said, and you guys all heard me say, "It's clean air, clean water, green open hills." And, you know, we still have our city in the 17 miles around there, and there are a lot more houses and a lot more buildings in there, but we still have our open space, our green open space in San Luis Obispo. I'm really proud of that, proud of both those parts of it. So, I did run for office in 2013, and again in 2014 and 2018. And in my ballot statements, I did promise fairness, honesty, transparency, and a no-nonsense attitude. Coupled with, my sons are out there, they know what I'm talking about. Attitude coupled with a balanced, thoughtful approach to the city's challenges. I think I kept those promises, and I'm proud of that common sense legacy as well. In fact, I'm happy that I got to do almost everything I ever thought to do, and way more, way more, from putting housing production front and center, to realigning and reorganizing our advisory bodies, and not to mention, Madam, getting credit cards into the parking structures. Not to mention also wrestling with the pandemic, but I didn't particularly want to do that, but that's what happened to me. So, I am most proud of, and perhaps most proud of, helping the city reimagine its budgeting process. Let's mention that. A little bit, because I really wanted to look farther into the future of a larger and wider world. When I started in 2013, building a skate park was the kind of thing the city aimed at doing as a major city goal. You can believe it. And that's wonderful, skate park, it was wonderful, it was great. Dave Baldwin and I went and looked at all the great cement that was being poured. But I thought our city needed to think more strategically in the longer term while still getting the daily work done. And luckily, lots of people agreed with me, and that's the direction we've gone, so I'm very proud of that. I could list all kinds of accomplishments that I don't want to talk about anymore because it's in the past. So, the last year, I mean, I knew this was going to be wonderful to get off the council after nine and a half years, but I also knew it was going to be hard, and so I kept a journal all the last year, very imaginative. And I wrote every time I was doing something for the last time. My last December, you know, Christmas parade, my last January meeting, my last mid-year budget cycle, my last evaluation of our staff, my last advisory body interview, my last ribbon cutting. I wrote, I wrote something about what I would miss about it and what I would not miss about it. I did a lot of stuff this last year, so there are a lot of things to miss, including my colleagues, and a lot of things that I won't miss, but I'm not going to talk about this right now. So, I thought I'd kind of talk about the four themes, four themes that, after reviewing this, I kind of thought, well, what are, you know, what are the things that I miss the most, that I mention the most often? And there are four things that I miss, that I miss the most often. First of all, because I'm really curious and because I'm kind of nosy, and because as our council member Peace has noted, I do not like surprises. I do not like surprises. I'm impatient with process, but I like it because it tells me where we're going and what we're doing, and I like that. I like planning, I love planning. Planning commission, yeah. So, I love being part of the City Council because you find out about everything. There are so many fantastic things going on here all the time, done by individuals, done by groups, done by nonprofits, done by businesses. They're just, it's amazing, and you know, when you're on the council, you get front row seats, they tell you about when it's going to come, they remind you that it's going to happen soon, they tell you that it's happening now, they personally escort you there sometimes. We've been getting fantastic new weather reports from Mr.... So, everything from weather reports to ribbon cuttings, it's been great sitting on the front row for that, and I'm really going to miss that a lot. In terms of policymaking, as has been mentioned, I will miss the great privilege and opportunity to affect city policies and programs and plans and projects specifically around housing. By continually and consistently, listen carefully, council, I'm a new person. By continually and consistently and very, very loudly saying yes. Can't get a project unless you say yes. That's what it takes, that's what I did, and I'm going to miss that opportunity to do that from the dais. So, I'm going to miss that a lot. Third, I will miss the amazing residents of the city and all the people involved in our city partnerships for their votes and their support and their input and their help. I will, as somebody has noted, especially miss our advisory body members. I love interviewing them, and I did a lot of these, I mean, everybody except Mayor doesn't do it too much, but love interviewing them every year. They're so interesting, I don't know if any of you are out here, and our new council member is a planning commissioner that I appointed or recommended to be appointed. They're so, as Michelle was, as you would have been if you could have. They are, they are so interesting, they are so intelligent, they're so knowledgeable, they're so dedicated, they do so much work for the City Council and for the city, and they do it as volunteers. So, when I was on the planning commission, I had no idea how much the council depends on the advisory body work, that deep dive, nitty-gritty, kind of dig through everything kind of work that the advisory bodies do. And I really appreciate the fact that they are still doing it many years later, and it's citizen involvement at its bare best, and I'm going to miss, I'm going to miss our people and especially those advisory body members. The fourth thing I will especially miss is the incredible people, the amazing, incredible people that I work with on city staff. Michael, Matt, both Greg, Shelley, Aaron, Nicole, Rick, Chris, Bob, everybody. I, I'm going to tell you guys, I mean, I read this journal I wrote every single time I spoke to any of these folks. So impressed, they are so, this community has no idea how lucky we are to have folks like Christine and Derek as leaders, who hire these wonderful people and work with them every day. We are so lucky. Not to mention our remarkable City Clerk Teresa Corrington, who keeps City Hall, along with her team, keeps City Hall organized and legal and responsive, besides shepherding council members to the right place at the right time, all those places, things I did, as I mentioned. I will miss Detective Luca Benedetti, who was one of the good ones, who sacrificed his life for our city. And that kind of stuff doesn't, I mean, it's pretty amazing, and yeah, I'll miss those people too. I'll truly miss every single one of the extraordinary city staff that I met or worked with over these past years. You are so smart. You work so hard. You are so dedicated, and you are so nice. So much nicer than I am. Again, the people who know me know, that is really, I mean, it's just great to see people who are driven and intelligent. I'm all those things, but I am not that nice. I just, I've just been so impressed. You all deserve more thanks and more appreciation and more than anything else I can ever say. Thank you so much, very much. As I said, there are some people and some things I won't miss. But I'm not going to talk about any of those except about building one. I won't miss what I call the burden of responsibility that goes with gift power.